Called to order the meeting of the Ottawa City Planning Commission. Would you call the roll, please?
Member Maxwell is absent. Member Kane is absent. Vice Chair Crowley?
Here.
Member Streznikdine?
Here.
Member Harris?
Here.
And Chair Lantus?
Here.
We have a quorum. Item number three is the consent agenda, and that would be the September 11th, 2024 meeting minutes. Did anybody have any additions or corrections? Hearing that, I'd accept a motion to file those.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes?
Second. There's motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Declaration at this time, I would like to ask the Planning Commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair discussion conclusion. Hearing none. Next item is public comments, and this is persons who wish to address the city planning commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as the agenda item is called. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court or with other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any public comments entered via online chat will not be recognized or commented on. Any presentation is for informational purposes only. The planning will take, Planning Commission will take all other comments under advisement. Item number six, public hearing. A rezone application located at 132 South Mulberry Street submitted by Van Knight Homes on behalf of the owner Billy Watts, Zach Martin, city planner. Comments, this application is a request to update the zoning located at 132 South Mulberry Street from its current zoning I-1 light industrial to R-1 low-density residential. And I will open the public hearing. Zach, would you like to give your presentation?
Alright, as stated, this is a request for a rezone from I-1 light industrial to R-1 low-density residential at 132 South Mulberry Street. The subject site is an undeveloped 0.26 acre tract located along the western side of South Mulberry Street, currently surrounded by a mix of vacant and developed parcels with a mixture of zoning. The east, north, and south are vacant parcels, zoned I-1, and to the west are two parcels, zoned R-2, on which a church is built. The wider area is generally residential in nature with several older-built homes, as well as a smattering of industrial and commercial uses such as an existing warehouse at the corner of South Mulberry and East First Street. The applicant is requesting this rezoning to allow for the construction of a single-family home on the property, and this request would be in line with the historic use of the property and potentially serve as an impetus for larger rezoning and rehabilitation of the surrounding area. Here we have an aerial of the property. It is highlighted on the screen as well as existing residential development and the church immediately to the west across the alleyway. I've also highlighted utility lines that go through the area that would be utilized by the property. We have the sanitary sewer line through the alleyway, the water line up on South Mulberry Street, and then I did just indicate a drainage way that is on the other side of the block near the old lagoons. Here we have an overview of the zoning, again with the subject property highlighted. As you can see, the entire block of South Mulberry is currently light industrial with R-2 across the alleyway, which is medium-density residential. And then we have public use on the other side of the block to the east, which includes parkland and water treatment facilities. In determining a recommendation, staff found the following. First, whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purposes of these regulations. The proposed use of a single-family home would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the proposed rezone. The subject lot, as well as the surrounding lots, are of a size that is consistent with the intent of the R-1 district and would allow for plenty of open space. The proposed rezoning conforms to the intent of that zoning district in that it is also located on the edge of a higher-density and centrally-located residential area to the west. The character and condition of the surrounding neighborhood and its effect on the proposed change, as stated, the surrounding area is largely residential in use despite large areas of zoning for industrial uses in the area. This area has historically been residential in use with city fire map showing dwellings on the lots along South Mulberry since at least 1924. The request for this property to be rezoned to allow for what is a historical use in the area is an appropriate one. Whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected, and if so, the nature of such change or changing conditions. Due to the zoning of the property as industrial, residential development is not permitted. This, in addition to the size of the existing lots, make the development of parcels difficult given the current zoning and those requirements. The ongoing demand for additional housing within Ottawa also reflects changing conditions in the wider community that support this consideration. Current zoning and use of nearby properties and the effect on existing nearby land uses upon such change in classification. The proposed R-1 zoning would not have a significant impact on existing nearby land uses. As noted, the surrounding area is primarily residential in nature, if not always reflected in the zoning. Some uses, such as the ECAN's warehouse and city water facility further down East First Street, do reflect some sort of industrial or commercial usage but are atypical for those blocks overall. Whether every use that would be permitted on the property as reclassified would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property in the immediate vicinity. The proposed uses would be compatible with the surrounding properties. As stated, the proposed use would be a home, which is the same use as properties in the surrounding area. Suitability of the applicant's property for the uses to which it has been restricted. The site is suitable for the proposed development. As noted, this area has historically been residential in use, if not always in zoning. The parcels along this street reflect residential dimensions, and the surrounding uses and context support this proposed use. Length of time, the subject property has remained vacant or undeveloped as zone. Staff was not able to determine the length of vacancy at time of review. Whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services exist or can be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the property if reclassified, it does have access to all existing city utilities and services, and the rezoning would not impact that access. In general, the amount of vacant land that currently has the same zoning classification proposed for the subject property, particularly in the vicinity of the subject property, and any special circumstances that make a substantial part of such vacant land available, were not available for development. This area is unique within Ottawa. It was historically an African-American neighborhood and has been residential in use for over a century, but zoned or intended for industrial uses for well over 50 years. This can reflect several things, including attempting to maximize industrial uses along and then extent railroad near the river, exclusionary zoning, a combination of these things or other factors. The areas immediately to the north of East First at South Mulberry are largely undeveloped, many parcels lacking access to developed right-of-way. There are other areas and parcels of R-1 available throughout Ottawa. However, this application serves as an opportunity to stimulate development in an area that otherwise would continue to remain largely vacant due to the current zoning in that historic context. Whether the proposed amendment would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the city's comprehensive plan. The city's current comprehensive plan has a stated goal of a variety of housing types and affordability of housing options. This proposed rezoning would address, address that goal in allowing additional housing to be built. Whether the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweighs the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property by such reclassification, staff did not determine that there would be any gain or loss in the public health, safety, or general welfare that would be created by this change. Such other factors, as the Planning Commission may deem relevant from the facts and evidence presented in the application. Staff does note that a neighboring property owner, Louis Nunez Jr., did vocalize general opposition to the proposed rezoning in a discussion with Director Nice. In the recommendation of professional staff, staff does recommend that the application to a rezoning to R-1 low-density residential be approved. The applicant's proposed project would address a need within the community, and the proposed rezoning is suitable for the context and history of the surrounding area. With that, the official recommendation is that the Planning Commission deliberate approval of the rezoning at 132 South Mulberry Street for the following courses of action. Take final action at today's regular meeting and approve the rezoning request at 132 South Mulberry Street, or refer the item to the next regular meeting for continued deliberation and consideration. As well as alternative actions.
That it?
That is it.
Okay, do we have anybody here from the applicant or their representative? Okay, if not, I will open it to public comments. You need to limit your comments to three minutes, and you need to come to the microphone and state your name and your address. So if anyone would like to come up for that, please do so.
My name's, my name's Ken Cole. I have property to the north and west of the proposed site. I'm here to find out if it's going to affect my property.
And your address, Ken? Your, your residential address?
Residential is 110 Megan Lane.
Thank you.
It's outside Ottawa.
That's okay.
But I have property at 109 South Poplar, which is to the north and the west. Mainly, my question is, will the rezoning of this lot that's proposed have any effect on the zoning or taxes or anything else on my lot at 109 South Poplar?
No, the rezoning of this parcel would not impact your existing parcel on Poplar.
Okay. That's the main, uh... That's the main thing I wanted to find out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Lois Nunez Jr., and I own the property of 104 South Mulberry, 116 South Mulberry, and 126 South Mulberry. And I'm concerned about, is this spot zoning, what we're trying to do here? And then after it got, after it gets spot zoned, eventually just change it all to residential?
Well, this, I, I, I don't, I guess you could call this spot zoning because it's the only R-1 in the area. However, if there was a time in the future when we would get a request to rezone other parcels in that area, it would be for, there would be a public hearing just like this one. I mean, the city can't just go in and rezone an area without allowing the public to comment on it.
Okay.
At some point in the future, should there be, um, um, I'm not speaking correctly on that, or?
Well, and to kind of address some of the spot zoning comments, we, our job is to an extent split hairs. So there was an application in previous years for a property along South Mulberry that staff did not take to commission for concerns about spot zoning. It was actually on the eastern side of South Mulberry.
That's correct, yeah.
They did not take that, and that is probably a more true example of spot zoning in that it would have been an island, is kind of how we would think of that, surrounded by light industrial. This particular property would be unique on the block face, however, it does serve as a transitionary zoning from properties immediately across the alleyway. So there is still an adjacent residential zoning district to this, if this zoning district is approved. So it, it's unique on that area, but it does kind of transition over from the residential areas on Poplar into the areas on Mulberry. As for the larger neighborhood, we're exploring our options. There is no hard or fast answer yet on what that would look like, but as Chair Lantus said, that would be a public meeting, and there would be ample opportunity for additional engagement as far as that's concerned.
Okay. And my other concern is that when the church burnt down there on Second and Poplar, well, they bulldozed on my property and the proposed property and the property just south of the proposed, and there's, Lord knows what's in there. And I believe there's some hazardous stuff in there, like asbestos, whatever came off that church, and when it burned down, you know, they just dumped it all over on there. And I think it should be checked before any house goes in there. Because I'm concerned because, you know, there's been a flood area. I mean, it had been at one time, and the reason there's no homes on there, because the flood washed them all out. And, and the salvage yard is just right across the street, and it's, it could be a lot of stuff in there, and I'm concerned that that stuff in that rubbish that they bulldozed over there is in there, and I don't think anybody wants to put a house on a hazardous land. I mean, that affects my land right next to it also.
Which, and that is a valid concern. I would note that any development that would go on there would have to take that into consideration regardless of the zoning, home, commercial, industrial, would all have to take that into consideration. So it, it is a valid concern. It does skew, skew more towards any potential developer of a piece of property and how they would approach reclaiming portions of that land or taking care of any potential hazards that do exist in there. So that is definitely something that's part of the consideration, but it is, that's an overall consideration for any zoning on that property, so.
But wouldn't it be just on the safe side to have that, those three parcels checked? Because we don't want to run in, put a house there and then run into it, there's, and you know, there hasn't been any houses on there for over 50 years, and I don't see if there was a delay on this, just to get the land checked, the deal?
We'll be certain to make the applicant aware of that concern.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Sorry. We'll, we'll be certain to let the applicant know of that concern.
Yeah, my, is there anybody signing a disclosure that there's nothing on that property?
That, that would be between the current landowner and the future landowner.
Okay.
The disclosures would be.
Okay. And then another of my concerns is the sidewalk there for that house. Where does the American Disabilities Act come in play there? The curbing on the deals, no access to the front, and at 212 South Poplar, there's a house, and it is facing on Poplar Street, but there's no access, access to the front. There's no sidewalks, there's, nobody can get into it, they're using the alley. They've been using it, you know, that's the way it was built. But now this property owner, are they going to use this?
We can't, Mr. Nunez, we can't answer for that. That's, that's more of a site plan issue than it is a zoning issue, and right now we're concerned with the zoning. At some point, any future development will be required to submit a site plan to get their building permit, and that can all be addressed at that time by the appropriate staff, but that's far beyond our purview here as the Planning Commission.
Okay, but you'll let a house go in there with maybe there's questionable stuff in, on the ground?
We're not letting anything go in on, we're just rezoning the property. The, any disclosure, and I'm coming, I'm speaking to you, this as a, somebody who's been involved in the sale and purchase of real estate in this community for a long time.
Sure.
If there's, if there's a possibility of, of hazardous waste there, that should be disclosed by any seller, any potential buyer, and we would have nothing to do with that.
Okay.
That would be up to the buyer to decide whether they wanted to purchase the property based on the information they had, or whether they wanted to require the seller to do testing before they purchased the property. But that's, again, that's, that's not what we're here to do today.
Okay, so it'd probably be to my advantage if I'd get hold of, of, what, what's his name, Vance or?
Van Knight Homes. Yeah, Van Knight Homes. It's Slade Van to Van, there's the applicant.
To my advantage, you get a hold of him and tell him there's possibly a deal, maybe we should get this matter settled before we build on there and see what they say, and then if they say no, go ahead, and then something comes up, it's their baby then?
As a private citizen, I believe that is well within your right to reach out to them as someone who is just a neighbor and wanting to inform them of that information. It's likely Slade is aware of the surrounding area, just as someone who develops a lot of property within Ottawa, but I believe it is within your right to reach out to the applicant and, you know, have that discussion.
And then I kind of missed the, the deal on the sidewalks.
That, that's part of the site plan. That's part of the, I don't know, I don't, we don't know about the sidewalks in the area.
Sure.
So, and I would say that you've gone well over your three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about the three minutes.
Do you have anything else pertinent?
Yeah, okay.
Alright, thank you.
You know, I'm just like my father, you knew my father.
I did real well, yeah.
He liked to talk quite a bit.
Well, that's okay, you had valid questions.
Okay.
But this is not the body to bring them, most of them to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
My name's Jan Cromer. I live at 115 South Mulberry Street. My son purchased that property, Joseph Caldroni, but he's in Texas, so he couldn't be here. And I live there, so I just had a few questions. And you might have already answered it, and I maybe didn't, but I just want to make sure. Okay, so he purchased that property that we were told that it was light industrial. We did have the option to change it to residential, but wanted to keep it as light industrial. Okay, so just want to make sure. So we want to keep it light industrial. Will that affect that property? I mean, would?
So this particular request is limited to this piece of property.
Okay.
So that is something to be aware of. Now, I will be upfront and say that the city is exploring that area for potential rezoning options in maybe a wider sense, but we are approaching it in a few different ways, including getting information from the residents and the owners of the properties that are currently there. This was something done in a previous city that I worked in. We worked with the neighborhood and the owners to make sure that if their properties were desired to be excluded, we gave them that right to do so. I, I will say with 115 being existing residence, that is non-conforming, which does have some concerns along with it because industrial land does not permit residential uses. So that is something to be aware of with that property. May have been discussed when it was purchased, something of that nature, but that is just something to be aware of, and I'm sure you are. But as far as the wider neighborhood, it is in discussion at an administrative standpoint of kind of how we can approach that area because it is an area potentially available for development by people like Van Knight Homes who are interested in providing more housing in Ottawa. However, you know, this process can look like a lot of different things, and we don't have a set path right now. But this particular application is limited just to 132 South Mulberry.
Okay, yeah, because we, we were in contact with the zoning before the purchase of the house and also through the, both the realtors and everything about the zoning. So we did have all the information, and we were given the information from Sarah, I believe, who was actually the person at that time when we got the house, that it, it was, you know, we went through what we thought were the channels and given the information, and all the information. So, and then I also am concerned, since it was brought to my attention, about the possible hazards of possibly asbestos buried in that property, especially since my property is lower, obviously, than that where rain, even underground water can be running, you know, down to my property, where if that land is dug up and disturbed, you know, that could be, first of all, it could affect the resale of our property if now we're contaminated because all that property was dug up. Who would be liable if, now that we all are aware of this possible situation, who would be liable if that happens? If I become sick because, you know, we do find out that there is a hazard, and now that's all been disturbed and brought up to the surface, or, you know, I mean, who would be liable for that?
My immediate gut sense is those developing the property. We are looking at a rezoning which just changes land use designation. So we're not actually talking about the physical structure at this time. We're not talking about land disturbance at this time. We're simply talking about the ability to utilize a piece of land for something other than what it is currently zoned. As far as true liability, that would be a discussion that would likely need to, it would be an ongoing discussion, and I don't have a quick or easy answer for you at this moment.
Okay, so to be able to get an update, who would I contact for that? Who would be the person that I would be supposed to talk to?
As, now, what do you mean as an update, ma'am?
Well, he said currently, like?
It's potentially not even within our office as far as that. Again, we are looking at the zoning. We handle zoning and subdivision and land use. As far as potential hazardous materials, that's not necessarily in the purview of this particular office, so I do not have a response for you at this moment.
Okay.
You're welcome to reach out directly to me if you have additional questions. I can attempt to do some additional research and find out who I can point you to, but I, I don't have a quick answer for you.
And who is in charge of zoning right now? Like, who is the person instead of Jenna?
I am the city planner. Jenna is no longer here.
Okay, because I kind of already gone through Sarah, and then I've gone through Jenna, and so.
Planning has a lovely turnover rate.
And you're Mr. Nice.
So yes, it is my office.
Because I've tried to reach out to you multiple times. I've called and I've come up here actually in person several times, and I've not been able to get a hold of you, so.
I wasn't aware of that.
Because I wanted to talk to you about some potential, you know, uses and stuff for that property, and I want to always, as I have when we first, before we bought the property, want to be in compliance with the city, you know, and not do anything that is not within the zoning. And I really would like to be able to set up an appointment with you to do that so that I can make sure that I am legal and I'm, you know, not doing anything that I'm not zoned for. If we could come up with a time, that would be great. So, and I can, okay, do you have a card I can have?
But not on me at this moment, since we're in the middle of a commission meeting.
Okay, what is the best time to reach you? What's the best time to reach you, actually?
After this meeting, we can have a discussion and get something set up.
Great, okay, thank you.
I would just like to address one thing that Zach said he would do. I, I think I can save you some time. Should you have concerns on environmental? I believe there's a Franklin County Environmental Department, and if not, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment would be the persons that you would want to contact. Should you have any questions on past dumping?
Right, well, I think anybody, if they owned that property, might be concerned and just want to, you know, kind of find out before maybe they are exposed or their property's worthless, you know, so.
I think we pretty much covered that, that that's a, that's a private matter, that's a civil matter, not, not what we do here at this board.
Okay, but this could eventually, within the near future, affect the zoning of the property we bought and change, be changed. If we don't want to have it changed, it could be changed by, yeah. Like, if we don't, as a property owner, we don't want our zoning as light industrial changed there. We, it might be out of our hands and be in the future changed.
So that, that would be a, a separate hearing, separate meeting, if, if that were pursued. So that would not happen without a public hearing, without an opportunity for comment.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks.
Same process that we're in now, okay?
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else?
I'd like to expand a little bit.
We'll do that after we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, so. You all have any follow-up questions on anything, or? Come back up to the microphone, please, so we can get you on record. And just, just briefly, please, just briefly.
My name was mentioned over here, but it was going so fast, I don't know how it was mentioned. My name was in, on there.
Right.
If I could get a copy of that? Because I don't have no idea, you know, we were going so fast, and I wasn't expecting.
A copy of our agenda is back on that table. You're more than welcome.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it has, it has the map.
Yeah, I just need it there for, right there for my, okay.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah, that just says that you have expressed some concern, and now you've expressed it twice.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. Come back up to the microphone, please.
Will there be, will this meeting be put into writing where we can have a copy of everything that was said by everyone here?
It's actually, will be on, it's, it'll be on Facebook.
Okay.
So you can go to the city, you can go to the city site on Facebook and watch the whole thing.
Oh, well, I didn't put any mention.
Over and over and over again, if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, sure. All right, with nothing else, we're going to close the public meeting, and now commissioners. You have questions, concerns, comments?
I want to expand a little bit on what you'd said. When it comes to demolition, the waste from any demolition project is supposed to be hauled to the landfill. Now, whether it was or wasn't, I wasn't there to see it, but it should have been inspected by the city at the completion of the demolition, and anything hazardous at that time should have been disposed of properly. Now, as Chair Lantus said, that anything that could possibly come up there should have been disclosed by the sellers to the buyer, and the buyer, whether they took the disclosure or not, the buyer has a responsibility to cover themselves if they want to go in and do soil samples or anything like that before they complete the purchase of the property. So I don't know if that helps you understand the process or not, but that, like Chair Lantus said, that's more between the seller and the buyer than anything, but the city should have inspected that when the demolition was done. So if, if everybody did their job, there shouldn't be anything in there that's hazardous or non, non-conforming material should not have been buried in there. I, I can't, I can't speak to that, I don't know, but that, that's all I got.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you for taking the time to look into the other situation that we had discussed in a previous meeting about that neighborhood and the inconsistency in the zoning, so I appreciate that.
So it sounds different than what you were told. You were told that it was denied.
I was told it was denied, yeah. So I appreciate you taking the time to look into that. So it sounds like it never even made it to this board.
That's based on what we found, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so do we want to take action on this today, or do we want to refer, defer it to the next meeting? What, do we need more information, or what's the pleasure of the commission?
I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Is this a motion to accept the findings or?
Accept the findings as presented.
Yes.
Thanks for clarifying.
It's okay, and if not, then would you call the roll, please?
Member Kane is absent. Member Harris?
Yes.
Chair Lantas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Streisnek Dean?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Okay, thank you very much. Findings have been accepted as presented. Next is, we need to take action on whether to recommend this to the city commission for approval or denial.
I would make that motion to, for approval, take the city.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion amongst the commissioners? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Member Harris?
Yes.
Chair Lantas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Streisnek Dean?
Yes.
Member Maxwell is absent, member Kane absent.
Okay, thank you all for coming, and thank you for expressing your concerns. And I hope we've answered most of them, and if we haven't, why, you can reach out to city staff in the future, so. And again, should there ever be a recommendation to rezone any of your properties, different than it is now, you will receive notification, you will have the right to comment publicly on, just like we did today, so, okay?
This goes to?
City, it will go to the city commission? Yes.
I'll be honest, this is subject to change, but currently, currently we intend for it to be on the October 16th agenda.
It passes down.
It's done. Yeah, okay.
There'll be another meeting on that?
The city commission will have a meeting, and they'll, and they'll, Zach or Lucas will present our findings, and they will vote on it at that time. There will not be another public hearing. No, it's an open meeting, absolutely, but as far as them having a public hearing. Now, sometimes they allow people to speak to it, I think, is that correct? But it won't be an actual public hearing. So you won't get notice, you'll, it'll be up to you to look at, to find the agenda and make sure it's going to be the day that they said it's going to be. Because that could change if they get a busy agenda, or if they don't have enough to make a quorum. There's lots of things that could change that, but they know when they have it scheduled. So right now, it's scheduled for October 16th. What time of the day is that?
That's a 10:00 AM meeting.
That's a 10:00 AM meeting on October the 16th, as we speak, okay? All right, moving on, staff comments?
Just a few, so thank you for making quorum, as always. And just a reminder that we do have that open seat in the, outside the city. And then Ashley has done some work to look at the calendar through the end of the year, and I'd ask her to make a few comments on that.
So I just wanted to point out that the Thursday meeting in November is actually on Thanksgiving. So right now, we don't have anything scheduled for that timeframe. So just curious if I wanted to go ahead and cancel that meeting or move it, it's a surprise. But then there was also the December, Thursday, December meeting is the day after Christmas, so that'd be something. As far as schedule, are you guys too?
Well, just off the top of my head, and you guys tell me if you agree or disagree with this, but I would say we cancel both of those meetings. And then we could, if, if necessary, if something came up that required action, we could have a special call meeting. Is there anybody that would?
I agree.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
I was going to bring in pumpkin pie and everything.
That's okay, you can, you can just eat it and save us some whipped cream. Anything else?
No.
Anything else, any commissioner comments today, other than we love the sandwiches, but turn the heat? Turn the cool down, just up just a little, we don't, yeah, I can't feel the end of my nose. Announcements, October 9th, 2024 is the city planning commission meeting at 7:00 PM. And October 31st, 2024 is the planning commission meeting at noon. If I hear, if I don't have anything else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say.